Good afternoon and welcome to our work session. Today is Friday, October 29th. The time is approximately 3:02. And we are here for our work session. Members present in the boardroom includes Members Lessons, Jacobs, Higgins, and Bellamy. And online, we have Member Holloman. So we do have a quorum. And we are ready to start. So we have one item on our agenda today. And that is our bond discussion. And again, I want to thank those board members that did send in their questions ahead of time so that we could expedite our discussion and the staff could be prepared. And with that, I'm going to pivot to our superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President. And here to really present and discuss with the board is, of course, myself, as well as our Chief of Operations and our CPNC team, as well as we have Jim, our CFO, and Dr. Stock, our Deputy Superintendent. So we're present to be able to really tag-team questions. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Raw, Chief of Operations.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So I'd also like to introduce, and I think most will remember from our previous meeting, behind me, to my left, we've got Charlie Peters, who is the Project Manager for the Inlet View Replacement Project. And sitting next to him is Paul Barrell, who is our designer from Envision. And it just proved that, you know, these guys are pretty tough. I think they have about two inches of skin on their back from the wire brushings that they've been through. But I just, you know, all joking aside, I do want to, you know, compliment Paul and Charlie for their work here over the last better part of a year-plus in working this project. And that they, I think they have represented themselves in the district very well. So if I might, just to briefly recap, we did present at the last board meeting the 2022 bond proposal, as well as the six-year capital improvement plan. So I recognize that there's been, you know, some, you know, now that the board has had a time to internalize both of those products, as well as some of the recent events that have occurred with regards to Inlet View Elementary Schools specifically. What I'd like to do, Madam President, if you're okay, that we would just open this session up for questions. And then, as Dr. Bishop mentioned, you know, we'll probably, between us all, provide responses.
So I do understand that Members Lessons and Jacobs sent questions ahead of time. So let's go to them. Let's start with you, Member Lessons.
Micah? Yes. Yeah, I mean, I had sort of broader questions. And then I had certainly a number of Inlet View specific questions, and actually one about, one or two about Chugiya. I think one of the biggest questions I had is, have any demographic forecasts for Anchorage been adjusted since the Western Demographics Study a few years ago? And if so, what do we know now about Anchorage that we didn't know then? Maybe in light of COVID economic changes?
Sure.
Like, what do we need to keep in mind?
So I'll take the first shot at this question. It's a great question. So to your point, in 2018, we did contract to have a study done. And there were two parts. But one was with regards to school start times. The other was with regards to looking at enrollments across the district and demographic trends. Were there areas where the district could or should adjust either boundaries or modify infrastructure? So since that time, there has not been a similar study done specific to the demographics within the municipality of Anchorage. Every year before we publish our Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan book, which I believe members have seen, the district does receive a demographic forecast from, what's the company again? Northern Economics. And that those findings are published. I would offer, you know, between 2018, just prior to the earthquake, and now, there are a couple of things just to consider. We know, as an example, that there are some areas in the city that are growing. And, for example, we know that the southwestern portion, the southern portion of Anchorage in general has seen growth, consistent growth over the years. We know that certain areas in, you know, our midtown area have seen some decreases in population. But what's really kind of an anomaly when we talk about enrollments and demographics, the huge anomaly that is the result of the pandemic. In that, last year alone, you know, we saw a significant decrease in enrollment. And the district, you know, projected, you know, some significant recovery in enrollment for the start of this academic year. We recognized a lot of that. But there's still a very significant number of students that, from the start of the demographic to where we are right now, that we are down. And Jim Anderson can probably give a better accounting of what that decrement is. But it's significant. And it's across the district that really, I think, kind of throws the analysis of demographics, you know, kind of on its head right now until this settles out. So, Dr. Bishop, I'll pass to you.
Sure. And we'll be hearing these numbers as well in regard to just as we start the budget process. Because this month, again, as a reminder, October-November time is the really busiest time for Jim and his department. It doesn't seem, you know, when we get school kind of on step. But what they're doing is, they began an audit of last year. We're currently living in this year, just finished up, finishing up the count period with Oasis. And then, by the first week in November, we need to send our projections in for next year. And so this is quite, again, this is the time that we say we live in three budget worlds, closing one up, one's active, and we're setting up the next one. So we shared that we had lost over 4,000 students. We had projected 75 to come back. Of that, 50% came back, not 75. And so we will share, not only now that the Oasis count, they're certifying it, things like that, that we are behind. And I'll let, the numbers, I think, are still being shored up, not ready for presentation. But the answer is yes, there's a significant decrease. And with this, as we shared, probably there are forthcoming recommendations in regard to school utilization, as well as boundary changes. Jim, did you have anything that you can share from finalization?
Sure, I can add a little bit. I've already, Andy and I have already been talking to Northern Economics for those who aren't aware. All of the metrics, the data, and set profile that we used in the past five years before COVID, really focused on PFD, birth data, those kind of things. Since COVID, it's really been very difficult to project. So we did some community surveys last spring. We felt somewhat confident at that point that the COVID numbers were decreasing rapidly, as we saw during summer school. What we got back was subjective information that led us to feel somewhat confident that about 65, 75% of the kids might come back based on how parents felt then. But then, over the summer, when Delta variant hit and COVID really spiked up again, as it turns out, we got about 50% of the kids back that we had lost. So there is no computer program that can accurately predict right now what parental choices will be for their children. So we'll be working with Northern Economics, trying to use the old data we used to use and anything we can find on national trends. But I don't think I would have a very high level of confidence in demographic data for assessments and projections on schools next year. Because it really, a lot of it will depend upon what is the COVID status at that point in time. For those who remember, when we did our budget last February, we felt somewhat confident that COVID would decrease significantly by June. And we were right. And then we were wrong when it came back with a vengeance. So I don't think a large amount of money on a demographic study with no ability to project this world, global pandemic would be worth the time and effort.
But I think that major change, I mean, it is going to change. And it's not going up, probably. It's, but I don't know how brief to say. If anything, it'll be, we're trying to keep steady moving into the future.
And I can add a little bit more. I worked with a state demographer last couple of weeks. And we looked at the number of 20- to 30-year-olds that are moving into Anchorage in the past five years. That number has dropped compared to what we saw 10 years ago. So it does lead you to believe that there is that natural age of predictable childbirth. That age group is smaller now than it was 10 years ago in Anchorage. So, Dr. Bishop's spot on. I think, flat, or potentially over the next five to 10 years, unless we can somehow convince young adults who want to have children to move to Anchorage, that the numbers will decrease over the next five-plus years.
Okay. Did you have a follow-up, Ms., for that question? And then we'll just do a round robin, so. Okay. Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. So I actually had a follow-up, a Member Lessons question before I asked my first one. The 25% differential between the student population that we expected to return, and that didn't. Am I understanding right that we don't, we haven't delved into what the trends are in that group? And what part of town they might be from, or anything like that that might be available yet?
We do have some of that information. But I'm waiting to plug it into the Northern Economics database so we can get a better picture. We know by school. Frankly, what we don't know is, did they still stay in a school that was a private school? Were they originally asked for records to be transferred? Or did they move out of the city? We wouldn't know that because we don't track a student after they've left the district. There's so many unknowns. So we really need that PFD data to be able to match against community data, to be able to match against the percentage of children who are going to the district. And that's more valuable than trying to figure out the 10,000-plus who left Anchorage, where they might have gone.
And then, can I get my own question? So, thank you. The, after hearing staff in the administration say that our enrollment is, the goal is to remain static in the next few years, the juxtaposition of that versus the growing deferred maintenance backlog, those two things might not be in harmony to the casual observer within our municipality, I think. And so I'm curious as to if the administration, what the administration's thoughts are on this board, especially given the current dynamics for bonded reimbursement, increasing the 2022 bond amount any further than what the most recent proposal is that's on the table for, I think, about $95 million.
Want to talk to that, Dr. Bishop?
That's a great question. And with major maintenance, they already are facilities that we own. And so, just like a home, I think that we can sell a bond, if you will, or sell that message of the needed work. Because children are in schools, our communities are using these schools. The, basically, in the current climate of all unknowns, it would be very difficult, in my experience, of selling bonds for 15 years. That, this bond would come with a lot of difficulties if it is just increased more so. We have sold past bonds. The reason that, even though, I think, Member Donnelly brought up, you know, how much is actually coming from the state and this and that. But on the bottom line, when people look at it, it looks like a good investment, that we can continue to invest without impacting more. And in the current climate of uncertainty, I think that that is a secure thing for folks to feel, as though they're making a good investment when they see that. And so there are so many just issues going on that, you know, through the pandemic and, you know, decrease in jobs in Anchorage, and then the kids, and all that, that, I mean, if I, we all want a crystal ball, right? And we are, we do have a survey that we're going to give out so we can get more of a feel of our voters. And they have been very strong in the past. And so we're really feeling confident about that. And we can give you more information about that. But I think that was kind of your question. What do you, Jim, you had something else to add? No. So we can have more definitive, actual evidence for which to base our answer on. But generally, in a time of conflict, and that you can turn on the TV and there's conflict in our community, that doesn't resonate confidence. And what sells bonds is confidence. And, you know, I don't think it's for any fault of our own. It is the times we're living in.
Madam President, could I follow up? Thank you. So with that being said, just procedurally, if the board, and I'm not sure what outcome we'll see, but after the public sentiment that I know I've seen in my email inbox, I would guess that the board would strongly consider modifying the current proposal that the administration's put forward. Procedurally, is it best that the board do that during the non-action? Or I guess it would have to be an action item phase on the 16th? Or is it, is the administration, is it able at this point to submit another option to the board that would further modify what's been proposed thus far? What's the best way to move forward with that procedurally? Thank you.
So if I might, the administration has presented, through memorandum, a proposed bond and a proposed six-year capital improvement plan. And those are now documents of public record that the appropriate means and method to modify those would be through the introduction of an amendment, in that the board would act on amendments.
All right. Member Jacobs, did you have a follow-up?
I guess just a clarifying point. And we won't be able to formally make an amendment until it's an action item on the 16th, am I understanding that correctly?
Or a non-action.
Non-action first. You can pull it as a non-action.
We can pull an amend as a non-action.
Yes.
Understood.
Thank you. Member Higgins, welcome. I'd like to record, Member Higgins, you have a question. Oh, and Member Wilson. Welcome, guys.
When we use the, cut it on, actually, the microphone, that would help.
That would help, sir.
You know, mine's, obviously, Inlet View is probably the hideous issue right now that's on the table. But I've been hit up by the community saying that what is out, that we plan on closing Abbott Loop Elementary. And that we've moved, we're moving away from that. And that has not been a, you know, a discussion, really, a focus. But I need to ask about that. That is not in compliance still. We've got things, you know, issues with the fire marshal, I believe, still outstanding. Is that, if I'm correct? And at one time, we were looking at replacement of that. And the question, and then I remember hearing that we might be able to address the requirements through a less expensive thing. But I was surprised to hear in the, in a community council setting, and also get calls from the representative, the state representative of the district, that there's word out that the district intends to close Abbott Loop at some point. Can you explain to me what discussions are there? How that's impacting what we're doing right now? And I know that at one point, this was on there, it was off. But I don't know what the plan is, or what the administration is requesting, that we would close it, and the impact, and what role the board would do before that communication goes out within the community is a concern.
Yeah, I can start that through the president. That's a great question. And very similar, you were on the board then. What happened with Central is that when things are discussed, things go public about, oh, this was said, and this was said, and this was said. So the administration has not released any information about changes of bus routes yet, or closures of schools. We have not settled on anything. It is in the future, when you have a decrease of student enrollment so significant, and we need to best use our taxpayer money and operational funds for schools, you can predict that something like that might happen. Additionally, the board's work over about three or four years ago with the state legislature in understanding that it doesn't pay, prior to that time, to actually reduce a school. Because the operational funds, the funding formula, the six steps in Alaska, very nice formula, actually support smaller schools and smaller learning places. Anchorage in its building years built big facilities. So even while it, you know, favors small places, we have lots of real estate that potentially couldn't be used. There's lots of programs that could utilize that, specifically preschool. And so you have to balance new programs such as preschools, and the reading bill had preschool paid for. Our state's taxed with preschool coming in. You know, so we really have to weigh all the different pushes and pulls without going public. And certainly being asked in public, are you going to do this? It's going to shoot like fire. Oh, yeah, they said this. Same is true with bus routes. Change is difficult. And so we will continue to evaluate, finish this year, do the demographic study, as Jim said. It's deliberate to go slow, to go fast later, to make the appropriate changes. The state legislature did work with the Anchorage School Board in getting language that allows a safe landing for a school closure. And that occurred in the Hold Harmless. And we enacted that with Mount Spur at the time. Mount Illiamna was not a separately funded school at the time, so we didn't do that. But Mount Spur certainly took that into consideration, and we moved forward with that. Since then, there was a larger trigger in the statewide enrollment Hold Harmless. And so once that was triggered during the pandemic, the actual school one, you had to pick one or the other. And of course, we picked the district-wide one. So we are looking at all options financially that puts the district in the best position for our students and our operations. Because what happens in a school is really what matters. As well as paying keen attention to the changes and the demographics, and where people are going and what they're doing. And we just don't have enough information. But certainly, if you just looked at the number of kids that we were reduced with the number of schools, there is a potential to make a recommendation as we move into the future for school closures. Did you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do, thank you. I think, one, let me see if I can capture this in a way that, for the community standpoint. One, if there's a school closure, it's going to come back to the board. The board's going to be involved in making that decision along those lines. And I understand that. Two, we are in a state of flux, I understand. In regards to demographics, we have no idea what's going on with the pandemic, with the number of students, and how demographics will look out. And so leaving options on the table is reasonable. The issue will be, we also have the code requirements that are not being met, and how long the municipality is going to allow that to go unaddressed, and what options we have if we need to address it from a timing standpoint. Because that's kind of what hangs out there a little bit from the, I don't, is, I believe there's options here that's less expensive to go ahead and address the fire suppression system issue, or putting something on top of the roof, or doing something. And, yeah, so I just, I'm just looking at it from a timing standpoint that something's going to have to be decided here at some point in time.
And absolutely. The school board is the body that recommends school closure, or that actually approves school closure. I wouldn't say that we have no idea about the pandemic and the trending. We are just following it. We just haven't made, you want to watch a trend over time. And so we have an idea, but we need to see and get, gather more information. And honestly, as far as Abbott Loop in particular, because the bond was passed, that building will be utilized. And so I, at this time, don't feel, and we've discussed, that we would necessarily hold back. You know, I just mentioned other programs within our school district. It's a facility that could be utilized. And that's just a question that we need to take back. I really haven't discussed it. But that, I wouldn't say that that is just, like, cut off at all, that we do need to address that concern. And there was funds passed for the fire suppression system. And that's, again, to protect the facilities and to meet the fire code. I do like to share publicly that fire suppression systems are not, the student and the bell system is for student safety to get out, that the fire suppression is to save property.
Thank you. I think I'd just like to kind of piggyback on, I mean, there's a lot of, it's just human, that people, I mean, they can, you know, they make, they don't make it up, but they see things coming, or they see an impact to them. One of the things, we've known, at least during my tenure on the board, I've been very well aware of the fact that there are pockets in our community where the enrollment was low before COVID. And my guess is, now that we are going through and have experienced COVID, that that's going to be even more exasperated, like everything else has been under COVID. And so part of why we, one of the things the board did was revisited its policy on boundaries so that we could tie it to the census so that every 10 years or so, around that census time, we did another study to see where our kids were. So this low enrollment didn't just start with COVID. It's been, we've been on a decline now for a few years. It is more exasperated. And so, and yes, and so trying to figure out what that impact is and keep going. I mean, we're, we can't just stop and say, okay, well, where are we? I mean, we've got to pay attention to that. But we've got to continue to move forward.
Thank you. And Member Higgins might remember, but some of the previous things and the changes that went on at about the same time is really thinking about utilization. And Padaya, at the time that, really about 16, at the end of that year, they had some changes in leadership, and they had about 67 kids, and it was a charter school. Well, under the state statute, that would have been a closure of a charter school because of numbers. We had some just work, you know, really, the teachers who started the charter really wanted to save it. We got a different administrator. And the district went ahead. And that was prior to AS, you know, virtual school. That was our homeschool that ASD did. And so what we did with that facility was, it did transition. I mean, just to give you some ideas of the innovation creativity, it transitioned under ASD rather than a charter school. It is now over 300 students, 350, I think. We placed all the teachers for that program into Central. So now Central is utilized with dual program. We did the same with Avail. And Avail is now placed inside of Benson, that had room, 200 kids there. And then we also took where we were paying for some funds for Crossroads, which was about 20 students, but we were leasing property, that also went into Benny Benson. And so when we did those things, we also better utilized resources for students and more centralized those resources for counselors and nurses and things like that. So we continue to think of, because, you know, the day student allocation isn't increasing, and bonds are more and more difficult with, you know, the hiatus on the reimbursement, that we continue to think of what are the best ways to utilize facilities, as well as operational funds, meeting the needs and the goals of the school board. operational funds, meeting the needs and the goals of the school board. And so those are just some other changes in addition to closing Mount Illiamna, Mount Spur. And those three were very large actions taken with consideration of the future in mind. And at the time that those are being discussed, just having the discussions, because you have to talk to people and get the information, those also sparked, this is going to close and this is going to happen and all that. And we just work with people to be, when we have enough information to move it forward and talk. But you can't have a conversation generally in a public place without sharing, you know, all those things. And when we go to schools and talk to teachers and principals and things like that, you know, that just happens. But Keen is also, if thinking ahead, preschool is out there as if, and especially if, you know, the reading bill is going back up, Senator Begich has given it another try and that is not fully funding preschool, of course. It's working in conjunction with private preschools, but ASD could potentially have more preschool classrooms needed.
Okay, so let's, we'll go to member Wilson and then we'll go to member Holloman and Donley who are online. Member Wilson?
So actually, member Jacobs, he didn't take my question. I would have taken his question had I had the opportunity.
So you're good for right now?
I'm good for right now, thank you.
We're going to do a round robin. We'll come back around. All right, member Holloman, online, do you have a question?
I don't have a question right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Donley, do you have a question?
Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, we can.
That's good news. I finally got a headphone to sit with. Could you reiterate what our projected enrollment is at this point?
Through the chair to member Donley, we can share what our enrollment is and the projection for next year, we believe, what will be a steady. So I'll turn that over to Jim. We are finished our, you know, 20-day count in October, so Jim can share how those numbers. I don't know if he's prepared to share everything. I don't know if they finished auditing, but kind of the overall.
I didn't memorize the number before this meeting because it will be discussed at the Monday work session to give everyone an idea of impact on revenue. But we are approximately 2,000 students short for our neighborhood schools and we're about 500 less than what we anticipated for homeschool programs.
So what is the actual number for enrollment?
I thought I just said that. I did not memorize that number, but you'll see it on Monday. It's somewhere around 42, 43,000. I just don't know the number off the top of my head.
Okay, so between 42 and 43,000. Thank you.
Okay, member Lessons?
This is maybe less pertinent to the bond, but it feels relevant. It's come up in a couple of my discussions with the homeschool programs that I am the liaison this year. And what is, why can statewide homeschool programs enroll Anchorage students? And what do we know about the number of Anchorage, geographically located Anchorage area students who are enrolled in statewide programs? Like, and has, have we lost those students? Is taxpayer money going elsewhere?
The last time we worked with Northern Economics was two years ago, prior to the pandemic, and we had about 2,500 students within the Anchorage municipality that were attending either a private school or a statewide correspondence school. We don't get individual information on students that don't enroll in ASD. So we know that when you add the private schools and statewide correspondence, it was about 2,500.
And in regard to your local taxes, no, local taxes do not leave the city, the municipality for students that go out. But one of the innovations that we did start seeing at the end of 2020, it was imperative that we knew a lot of people chose homeschool and were looking. And not only were they choosing it, but, you know, Family Partnership and Frontier shared that they were sending our communities letters in the mail and, you know, actively enrolling them. And that was the beginning of the ASD virtual. And to keep students, we kept, you know, 4,500 last year. That was a high last year in the program. We had assumed only 25% would stay in that program and the rest would go back to our schools. And what we found was that 50%, so we have over 2,000 in ASDV. ASDV is a program, not a school. The students are enrolled through their homeschool and then serve through the ASDV so that there would be a better transition for them when the families choose to go back. But I foresee ASDV, you know, we're getting better every year. You know, we literally stood up a school, a virtual school in a summer and continue to work on that. So that was one of our goals, to keep our students here seeing that. Family Partnership is the one who's shared the most about their kids get called directly from cyber links and IDEA. And so we're working with them to compete with those other schools. And they have a view, their goal, in just speaking with them, is actually to attract back those real homeschool families that homeschool and go out. So there's some marketing going on with that and some work with Frontier specifically and Family Partnership. But that's a great question. Like Jim said, there is thousands of kids between private school and statewide correspondence.
Sure, you can have follow-up. Oh, thank you. So maybe this is going now back to the bond and thinking sort of about where our students are, where they're not, and looking forward. I was surprised to see Chugiak High School come up a couple of years on the bond. I think a previous iteration, I had seen it for 2024. And this year, I mean, it was, it's on the proposal for this year. But if I've looked at the last five years of Oasis counts correctly, Chugiak and Eagle River seem to have lost student population. So I wonder if you could speak, I mean, I've heard a lot about Inlet View from the community, but I haven't heard a lot about the sense of what's happening in Chugiak and Eagle River. And maybe you guys can just shed some light on why you thought that that particular repair made sense, why that investment makes sense, perhaps in an era of declining. Those are small high schools at this point.
Sure. If I might, so this is interesting because this was a very big topic of discussion when the district was communicating with that community about whether or not to rebuild greening. And there were a number of discussions about how to utilize that space. Here's what I would tell you on this, and we certainly are cognizant of enrollment. High school is a little bit different than a neighborhood elementary school. I mean, high schools really do embrace the community or the communities embrace the high school. There's a, there's a component there that exists that doesn't exist in an elementary school in terms of the impacts. Now, with regards to that area, and this is also acknowledged by the municipality's Long Range Planning Division, the three largest undeveloped tracks for future residential development are all up in that corridor, North Eagle River, up through Chugiak towards Peters Creek. That their opinion is that that region needs two high schools and two middle schools, which we have. The, you know, our economy, as I think most people recognize, is a boom or bust, that there are times when, you know, in a bust period that we've, like we are right now, we're seeing declines. But longer term, that area is going to expand. The realization that we also have is once you, once you close a school, odds are you're going to lose it. You are not going to get that school back, that land has value, that the district would probably be asked to cede management rights back to the municipality so they could do something else with it. So I mean, these are just reasons why we believe the wise thing to do is to continue to maintain those buildings, that it, that it is appropriate to do so because of the expected volume of students that we're projecting here into the future.
And what, may I follow up? What is the project?
This is the roof replacement project.
I just wanted to have that on record because it is to protect the facilities once the roof goes. But we could, it was, were you on the board when Chugiak, Eagle River? Yeah, so it was very significant discussion, long-term, probably a couple of months. And that's what determined the last bond, were those community discussions, do we combine the schools or not? That's a great question.
Okay, member Jacobs, we're back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm going to turn to Inlet View. I have, was able to connect with a group of area neighbors toward the site and heard some of the concerns about the process that the district has pursued at this point. What I didn't hear any significant amount of was a desire to not see a project involving Inlet View move forward. And so I was hoping to clarify, maybe even just get on the record, that if the board chooses to modify the current proposal, the administration, and include the Inlet View construction as part of the 2022 bond, it wouldn't necessarily at the same time be signing off on the all aspects of the project that have occurred thus far, recognizing that it hasn't reached a state in which things aren't going to be changed. Is that correct?
Through to member Jacobs, yes, that is correct. And I would just say, where that, where that project lands, whether it is 2022 or 2024, I don't know that, I would not make the connection that you could not put a project on a 2022 bond with an incomplete design. I mean, that's, that in this example would be preferable because it allows for what would be a fairly seamless transition into bringing on the GCCM contractor. But with regards to the design itself, and yes, we are at 65%, that there is still a lot of, lot of design work left to be done. So that's, that's just an honest answer. I would, I would offer, and not to go too far down this road, but just, it kind of comes back to Dr. Bishop's point at the start. There's a reason why the district has proposed to the school board that Inlet View be postponed to the 2024 bond year. And it kind of ties into all these things we've discussed with regards to the impacts of COVID, the economy on, you know, public opinion, and that we've alluded to school closures and a few other steps that in context would make it more understandable, I think, to the voting public. I mean, that's, that's who I'm thinking about. I mean, with regards to this school, what do people think about in the ballot? They're thinking about, do I really support replacing a school for Inlet View? They don't care if it's cited on the south end, they don't care if it's on the north. They want to know, is this something that we think makes sense? So they put it into a context. And I would offer just, you know, based on some of the, some of the dialogue right now that's going on within the South Edition community, if I'm a voter, you've helped me make up my mind on that school specifically because of what seems to be a lot of back and forth, very public discussion about the merits of that project. So again, that's, that's the thought process, whatever direction, you know, the board chooses to take on this one, you know, we certainly are prepared to support. But that's just something to consider.
A follow-up?
Yes.
Thank you. So the South Edition Community Council last night, as I understand it, passed a resolution, which you're probably familiar with, that urges the project to move forward amongst other things. I believe it also requests that the design committee be expanded to include other area representation in terms of neighbors. Is that something that the board should direct the administration to do? Is that something the administration would typically do on its own or is that something the design committee can do or all three?
So, so I believe, if I recall, last night when this was addressed, that Mr. Peters indicated that he would have a meeting with the current members of the BDC. I think that their intent from that meeting would be to extend an invitation to the community based on the request to add members of the Inlet View neighborhood, those who live in immediate proximity to the school site, to that building design committee. And I don't, I mean, speaking for myself, I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
Yeah. Okay. Dr. Bishop, did you have? Okay, all right. Yeah, and that was my understanding as well. And I do, I will say that there is a, I think we have in our box just probably within the last 20 minutes or so, a copy of that resolution, which is advisory in nature. It's not directive, but it's something for the board to consider. Moving, were you done with your follow-ups, sir?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, member Higgins, turn on your mic. There you go. Yeah.
I've been trying to process stuff a little bit. Just one more follow-up in regards to Abbott Loop Elementary. Regardless of whether, how it's used or what the decision is with that or any of the other schools associated with the population changes, we want that building to, want it to be safe. So the activities associated with addressing the deficiencies that right now exist with the fire suppression system to meet the code. And just from the public standpoint, the school was built safe. It was, it was met all the codes. At times, things change with codes. If you, if you have a home, you don't have to upgrade the codes until you sell it or something like that. With, with schools, you got to keep up with the upgrades, even if it was built to all the safe standards and there's nothing hanging out there, but the codes change, you have to do it. So my question is, if we're going to keep it that way, why wouldn't we put the resources in there pretty soon to meet the codes for the municipality of Anchorage so it isn't a problem unless we're weighing the options of fixing the school or replacing it with something else?
So to member Higgins, and again, it's a, it's a, it's a great question. So the administration has presented a proposed six-year capital improvement plan that, you know, significant change from the plan that was approved by the board last year involved a replacement project that the board approved that. So until the board concurs with and formally approves the revised six-year plan that would not include Abbott Loop for replacement, that it would be removed from the six-year plan, I believe that's the trigger to move forward on, on the modification, sir, that you're, you're speaking to, that if, if the board accepts that six-year plan that addresses Abbott Loop the way it does, then we have that money, that authorization to move forward on the, the fire suppression installation.
Okay, did that get your question? All right, Dor?
Just a quick question on Inlet View. So if the board chooses to request the Inlet View be put back on the bond and the community supports that by, actually by voting for it, would that give the opportunity for additional students to attend the IB program? Because as I understand it now, there's, there's an awesome opportunity for the neighborhood kids. Would that give us the opportunity to expand this program to additional students that are not neighborhood?
Through the president to member Wilson, we presently do that to a limit. So the IB program is open and I think as many students that from the neighborhood that leave the school to go to their leave the school to go to their choice schools, a number choose to already go to the IB. To your point, it would expand the number that could be accepted, just, you know, grow the number in the school. So the building, again, that is one of the points of contention, I think, that we're building it bigger and not on a larger footprint, but up. And the reason was, is to have more students without using portables in the building. So your answer is, it's yes, but I want you to know that there still are outside neighborhoods children already lotterying into the IB program. That would be a greater capacity. Okay. Member Holloman?
I still don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Donley?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Right, so we're starting over again. No, I'm, I'm good for right now. Yeah.
So I too am interested in Inlet View. And I really appreciate, and maybe this is a deep dive for our specialists over here. Thanks for being here. Can you talk us through what 65% design means? And what a return to the building design committee would entail? And a timeline for potential inclusion on an April 22 bond?
Want to come forward here, Paul or Charlie?
Thank you.
Welcome, guys.
Thank you.
And thank you for all you're doing and have done.
Certainly. Through the President, to answer your question, Board Member Lessons, so 65% is, the easiest way to describe it is literally from using just the term or the, the number 65%. So the project through completion would be from zero to 100%. And so we're exactly 65% complete with the design process before the documents are 100% complete and ready for construction. So that's the easiest way to describe it.
So what's missing? Like what's not there?
So third, so yeah, so that's a good, as a follow up, 35% of the documents are missing. So that would entail details that would revolve around all the different specifics like casework, finishes. And then it would also include construction details for like how you build rooftop curbs, how you build window headers and seals, those types of things. It would also entail additional envelope, building envelope details regarding the assemblies for insulation. And again, the material selections for all of those things. And then finalizing the tweaks of the site plan with, with regards to the playground layout, the hockey rink location, exact parking configuration and count based on code requirements, and all of those types of things regarding the site. Does that help answer that question?
I guess that helps me understand what's included in plans and what, what 35% remaining looks like. I think one of, I think the significant question for me is if we want to, it struck me that the prospect of designing a new school is something that would mean, if we're designing it for six decades, that means that the current kids who go to Inlet View will be grandparents at, towards the end of this building life. And I, that just, that's a long time. That's a lot of kids and it means that we need to do it right. And that means that it needs to be done well, you know, not just for the moment, but for the long term, for all of our collective investment. So that's how I see that. And so that's why I'm interested in maybe taking two steps back to make sure we have significant community support and buy-in for it. And so what does it look like to walk backwards from 65% to say, what else haven't, what haven't we talked about? Like what maybe else should we think about with this plan? And so I guess what does it look like to go back? From your perspective, what's that workload look like? What does the timeline look back?
Sure, through the President. To answer that question, what it looks like would be to basically redesign some portions, depending on what portions of the design wanted to be redesigned, because taking a step back would require additional design time and modification of existing design decisions that have been made. And so kind of more pointedly, you know, one of the things that we would explore if this did advance forward right away with having a new BDC member on the team that is a neighbor, like across the street, which are, there's about nine or 10 neighbors that are very vocal and, and that live right there next to where the school's going to be built. And if their involvement on the BDC team, we would, you know, welcome them and we would invite them to share their thoughts. But at the same time, one of the things we've done already, and we would, we would do further with that individual would be to explain to them the thought process that's gone on already. And that's what's posted on the website that we developed for the project, is all the details of how we came to the decisions that we did and that all of the concerns that have been expressed have been discussed. And been decided, you know, we've, we felt like we've, as a group, both ASD, Capital Planning and Construction, the Design Team and the Building Design Committee all feel like that the proper decisions or the best decisions were made for the project.
Did you have a follow up? We can come back around. Okay, yes. Carl?
Thank you, Madam President. So a question for our Design Team, and thank you both for being here for all the work you've done. If, if you two gentlemen were approaching the site for the first time and putting aside the work you've done, or at least doing your best to do so, is the, the current proposal to build diagonally across the new building from, from the current structure and not in the same footprint, is that the, the best location within the site to build a new school currently? Or would you prefer, on all things considered, to replace the building in the current footprint where it resides now?
Through the President, to Member Jacobs, to answer your question, it's a yes and no answer. So yes, it would be in the general proximity in terms of where we've designed it now. If we had our preference, and all things considered, we would put it in the middle of the site. But we can't do that because there's a 30-foot utility easement running through the middle of the site. So you have to choose either the north or the south end of the site. And so what we did for various reasons, and we had lots of pros and cons discussions on locations, we developed eight different site plan layout options. And we ended up where we ended up on the south end of the site because it had more pros than cons, obviously. But the orientation and the location is more ideal for having a community-minded school because it is still central in the site in the east and west direction. So right now, the current school is on the sidewalk, basically, on the north and west sides of the school. It's, so it's, it doesn't have a buffer between those neighbors. And so what we're doing with our current placement and trying to follow the ed specs is to have a welcoming, inviting community school that's for the best interest of everybody in the neighborhood. So locating it centrally in that east and west direction like we've done is the huge, I think, one of the main focal points on the design.
Can you, I'm sorry, did you have a follow up?
I did it, if that's okay.
No, go on. Yeah. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam President.
Started talking before I, ah.
All right. So I appreciate the answer, thank you. If, if, just a generally concerned citizen, whether or not they're in the South Edition area, you're not as interested in seeing the work as to how we got there. I understand that the Building Design Committee minutes are going to be placed on a website for public viewing. But in terms of like really more in the weeds data, like shadow studies or other plans, is there anything that someone who isn't looking to learn more about the process couldn't request or access for one reason or another that would be unavailable for, for public consumption?
I would look, I would look for ASD, CP and C to answer that question.
So I guess the immediate answer is no, there's nothing, since these are, these are public documents acquired through a public procurement process. The, the, there, there's nothing that can't be requested and provided. That answers your question.
And so the, the most appropriate method for someone to do that would just be through the normal request process of the district?
I, I think, and in this example, if it's something that is specific to the project itself, Paul has set up, you know, that, I think you've seen that web, website that they've set up as well as their contact information, if there are questions that are specific to the project, whatever, whatever that information request is, I think these gentlemen are very receptive to sourcing that data, that information.
Great, thank you.
So my question really has to do with just process over the last year and a half. Because, and I already, I know the answer, but I think it might be helpful for other members of the board to have the same kind of frame as to how the process, how you engage the community, which included not just the staff, but the teachers. There were community members on the committee. And I agree with Member Lessons, we're building, we have right now, we know that kids, parent, grandparents who are now sending their grandparent, their grandkids to that school, they're still in that community. And so there is that legacy and there's that history that's all built into that community. And it's a wonderful thing. So can you just give us an overview of the process that you used to engage, to come up with these nine plans, of which you've chosen one? Because it didn't just start last a month ago, it didn't just start six months ago.
Yes, most certainly. So, Madam President, the process actually started back in 2014, based on the current contract that we have under this project with ASD. We were awarded the project in 2014, which started with developing project analysis reports, the pars, for the different types of extensions to the life of the building, of the BLE, the ER, and the expanded renewal plus replacement. And so through that, there was a series of discussions and, and I guess, you know, board decisions to what happens within the view, which you guys are all aware of. And then we, just back last year, it came back to life in the form of the replacement. And so in, in 2020, we got an amendment to our contract and we started off on September 14th with the notice to proceed to replace the school. And so through those dates, or from that date line, we met with the school district and had a kickoff design meeting with Capital Planning and Construction and the school's principal, Patricia Erns. And then that, from there, we had a BDC meeting, which was our kickoff meeting with the Building Design Committee, which was formed of 10 members formed by the principal, which follows the, the BDC participation guidelines that ASD, CP and C has developed. And then those 10 members were all various stakeholders of the community that ranged from teachers, staff, parents, and also neighbors. Three members, 30% of that committee are direct neighbors that live in the neighborhood. One lives one block away and the other two lives two blocks away. They are parents. And so they fill two roles, both as parents and members of the community. And so we had that kickoff meeting with them on October 8th last year, and then that started off the design process. We then went from there and had three different visioning workshops at the end of October and in November. The first workshop was with parents, neighbors and community members, and invites were sent out through the school newsletter and the school's emailing list. And then the second workshop, design, visioning workshop was with teachers and staff, and invites were sent out through school communications. And then the third was visioning, design workshop was with students, and invites were sent out also through school communications. And they selected students that would be the most impactful to be part of that conversation. And then from then on, we had several, well, we had three different BDC meetings. So the way the Building Design Committee is structured is we meet basically at major milestones of the project. So that first milestone of defining the vision and what the mission was for the project, that was the major effort, first major effort. And then from that point, the Design Team went off and we did our work as design professionals, which includes architects and landscape architect and civil engineer, structural engineer, mechanical engineer, electrical engineer, and then also we have cost, professional cost estimators, and also an interior designer. And so our team started doing their work. And then at the next milestone, we had a BDC meeting in, in April, April 1st to be exact, which was at the 35% summit. And then, and then the next BDC meeting was, was in August, which was before the 65% summit. So we have these major milestones that we, we end up giving updates to the Building Design Committee. And then from then on, and you know, now to present day, we're going to have a BDC meeting next week to give another update on the design and also to talk about adding to the BDC with, with other community members. Does that fully answer your question?
That, that does. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Member Higgins, just, did you have another question? Okay. Let's go online, Member Donley and Holloman, do either of you have questions?
Still listening right now.
Thank you.
Still listening.
Thank you. All right, we're going back again. Kelly, you got another one? We still have a half hour. But if you don't need it, we can.
So I appreciate the transparency that a, somebody who knows how to navigate the board doc system can, can find, they can go to the Wayback Machine and they can, I could see, oh, this happened in 2014 and 2013. And my takeaway from looking at it almost a decade, decades worth of board docs and presentations, is that Inlet View has been sort of the proverbial, you know, the football from Charlie Brown that keeps getting taken away. And, you know, it's a, we live in a dynamic community and different needs have arisen and we have earthquakes and we have pandemics. And, but that was just watching the process of the community thinking about Inlet View waxing and waning certainly resonated with me. And, you know, I do hear the community loud and clear, the South Edition Community Council saying, we support a school in this community. And I guess it's important, I see it as important to understand, you know, that student perspective. I'm so grateful that the Design Committee took the time to look at what our students feel like they need and what our parents and what our teachers have thought that they've needed. But when we think about a bond, we're also thinking about the community as a whole. You know, what will people across Anchorage, how will they feel vested in this and how will they feel supported in this? And so whatever decision we make needs to be the right decision. And that's really more me using out loud. I guess.
But did you have a question?
A question, sorry. What, this is now maybe a financial question. It's the amount listed on the, as it is now for the 2024 bond, is about $34 million. Do we have a sense of what that breakdown is?
It's close.
Per $100,000, that metric that you have.
It's close depending on the interest rate, but a good average would be about $7.71 per $100,000 of assessed value.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, I'm glad you really mentioned the past with Inlet View. And in the 2020 bond, you heard administration speaking strongly for this. And 2020 also had some other, I don't think there is an uncontroversial bond, you know, it did have some, we were discussing this project, we were discussing earthquake damage as well as investing in old, older facilities for charter schools. So great discussion.
So great discussion, great support. And this community assisted in, you know, supporting the bond as well. And then to your last point, bond propositions are passed by whole communities, as Tom shared. And the the understanding about this from from the greater community and why now a change is specifically back to your point of, you know, when you were moving about greater communities understanding about why we do something and and why we don't. And the the biggest impact outside of just the the building and the site and things like that where there's internal to the community, we also have a pandemic, we've had some some changes in our city, I mean, there's a lot more going on than just this. And that was my caution. And always, we want to present a strong bond to our school board and to our community. And it isn't a lack of supporting South Edition, because I fully disclose am a South Edition person. So just just to share that, and I had disclosed that, that's my neighborhood, you know, prior to getting my third dog. So it is a wonderful, wonderful, longstanding, traditional home, family's place. So it isn't a judgment on the area, just a bigger picture of where we are and trying to do the best with what we have where we are. Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. So in a hypothetical situation where the board approved a bond package that included the Inlet View construction phase in it, when would the board see additional agenda items in front of us related to the project? Would it be awarding specific funds for contractors? And then are there reasonable and, or at least as reasonably unintrusive as possible, I don't know if check is the right word, or check-ins might be the better word that the board could add to formally follow up as to how the project is progressing and and sign off on further development, things of that nature? Thank you.
So I think I'd respond to that. I mean, to be sure, the administration, the board, the board can can ask for any, any updates, any information the board has, you know, the board can can direct, you know, has decision authority and can can enforce that. Generally speaking, once the the board has received and approved and awarded a contract for a project, then that project really is put into the hands, in this example, with capital planning, construction, the project manager, and they they execute the the project consistent with the the head specs, the parameters, all the guidance that went into. And generally speaking, the the discussion about the project itself, something like this, happens like what we're doing right now, that there isn't a formal system during the construction where the district would come back to the board. And I'm trying to, I guess I'm trying to understand, what what decisions would we be coming back to once the board has given authority to the the administration, capital planning, construction to do the project? The next time we come back to this, and we can certainly, just like we've done with Eagle River Elementary and Greening as examples, we're happy, happy to bring any board member through and, you know, walk through the sites, you know, and if there's, if there's reasons to have dialogue interaction, absolutely, we would do that. But that we would complete the project based on board intent. And then the next time we would meet is when the project is complete and we do ribbon cutting. I mean, I guess I'm not quite tracking the question, Carl, if there's some specific thing that, you know, we would be wanting to inform decisions that have already, in my mind, been made.
Sure. I guess it probably breaks down mostly to design, the concerns that I've had, and I mentioned earlier, the community by and large seems to strongly support the Inlet View projects moving forward in some capacity. I think the only concerns I've heard are are specific to the design process, which is no surprise to you folks, you've been hearing it. And so I don't know that I would support additional formal check-ins by the administration. But I'm curious, and we definitely was curious as to what's already in place, if there were any formal steps in the process of the board, if they loop back in. And it sounds like there's not, and so that's that's good information. I did have a follow up if I could.
Okay.
Yep. And so the the current plan, the bond proposal, i- is there a, is there a mechanism, thinking about through the the board's options as it proceeds forward through on November 1st and November 16? Is there a way to separate the 2022 bond and the items on it from further updates, speaking to Member Higgins' point about Abbott Loop? Is there a way to continue with the CIP in its current form while modifying just the 2022 bond? Or are we effectively modifying the proposal for the the six-year period?
Through the President, if I think if I'm understanding correctly, so if if the board were to introduce and approve an amendment to the 2022 bond proposition, I think that would that would automatically create an adjustment to the product that we call, again, the Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan Year One, which is our, which is 2022, that we would we would automatically update that document to reflect any changes by the board on the 22 bond proposition? Is that what what you're asking?
That's as part of it, I guess, the, Member Higgins touched on the fact that Abbott Loop in for future bond years, 2024 and beyond, Abbott Loop was mentioned. Would we also need to formally amend at the same time any further revisions going going forward? Or would that that be covered at a different time if for some reason the board wanted to take action on future bond years as well?
I think I understand. So to be sure, if I if I'm understanding that, to be sure, the the Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan is presented to the board again as a recommendation, that the the board could certainly, similar to the bond, propose amendments, adjustments to the six-year plan. And if the board were to act in that, you know, in the affirmative, then the administration certainly would make the modifications to the outline years, if that's.
Does that answer your question? Okay.
I think what you're asking is if you could decouple them and then recouple them. And yes, that's it. I mean, that's kind of what he explained, like whatever, one lever will pull the other and the other will pull, they'll come back together again, but you could look at one, change it, do another, make changes, and then we'd have to go back again and change it. So they're coupled, but essentially in the voting, you separate and then you put it back together. So it's just the continual, you know, adjustment.
So one change to the one will affect the change to the other.
Thank you.
But your question brought up a thought for me. Well, and I just forgot my thought. It'll come back to me. All right, Mr. Higgins, you gained.
Well, I guess I'll just throw in a couple of comments more than anything else at this point. I think the presentation earlier, some of the earlier ones I saw, I thought they included some pretty interesting information. I mean, you got to look at the, what we're paying off compared to present value, what they represent. We pay off $100 million of bonds that were put out, you know, 10 years ago, the value today, you do the same thing, is much higher of course, particularly during the pandemic on top of it, but supplies in art. But even without that, just that dollar value changes. So somehow maintaining that from here on out isn't just, it isn't just, even maintaining just deferred maintenance is going to be excessive. We've got, you got the idea of projecting a fourth from 2024, but what the deferred maintenance and other activities is likely to bump everything anyway. So I think it's 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 just that we're going to have to break that mold at some point to be able to even do that. It's not even viable to continue it forever. And I think the explanations and to the public and that why we're being reasonable with that makes sense, whether it's issue of two years from now, we still got the same issue. And I think seeing two years, we're going to have the same problem with more of this, more that, that's going to push it further back. And it would be like Abbott Loop, whenever I was here, and Abbott Loop, it got pushed back forever. And now we're questioning what we're going to do. We want to evaluate. I realize there were circumstances changing right now, but it just, it doesn't get addressed. And these community schools is so important. So that's, I think, the issue that, from my perspectives, that's out there, that isn't just a matter of postponing or moving it up. The question is, if now or never type of situation, because in the future, we got the same issues in this community. And I think community schools are really critical to outcomes. I think they impact stuff, they connect the parents, they connect the kids, they do all kind of things, and disruptions to that are difficult. But that's the challenge out there, is back to the, how much money can you do it with on a bond? Can you limit it next time to 80 million? Or are we really just following it further back because we need that much every year just for deferred maintenance? I think the public would understand, so thank you.
And that's why we went to the two-year bond. There were so many unknowns, there were so many, so much stress within our own economic capacity in Anchorage. So every year, I mean, we're gonna, I think you're absolutely right, we're not going to, we may solve it for now, for today, for this year, for this community, but it's going to roll and it's going to be very impactful. And that is a piece that we have got to prepare for. Because I do, I love my community school. I don't want anything to happen to my community school. But I also know that, you know, I mean, when when the community invests and we convince them to invest, then we got to give it our best shot. Dora, it sounds like we're into comments now and not questions, but we do have about eight minutes left.
And I was just going to share a comment, not a question. So so it's perfect. I just want to let the community know, we've we've received a ton of communication, primarily emails. But I do appreciate that. I appreciate the community reaching out to us. I appreciate the community members advocating for students. And and I appreciate the positive communication that we've received. And there's on on different sides of the the issue, but it's all been very positive. It's all, in my mind, at least what I've read, has all kept that they are the issue to trying to advocate for our students as well as advocating for their community. So I just wanted to say thank you to the community for that.
Thank you. Member Lessons, you have another comment or a question?
I've got a question. Based on my notes, the Lake Otis Elementary School building improvements were also sort of brought forward for this bond from previous CIPs. Could you just reinforce, like, what are the dire needs for Lake Otis? Like, why, what's really compelling right now about Lake Otis's needs? Could you just give us a quick, could you please summarize that?
So through the President, to Member Lessons, Lake Otis has a wide range of improvements that are needed. That includes a new roof, lighting, exterior, windows and doors, major work on the HVAC system, water system, wastewater system. So it's a pretty extensive renovation.
May I ask a follow up question? So I've spoken with a few principals who have undergone extensive renovations in previous years, and it's a lot of, it's a challenge. Is there any, was there any discussion about putting Lake Otis on the, let's make a new school instead overhaul, rather than, like, a new building for Lake Otis at some point versus sort of the major renovation?
Absolutely. We always look at cost of replacement versus building life extension and extended renewal. And and we weigh those, and we look at our return on investment as it as it's shown. And in this particular case, it was less expensive to renovate.
One more quick follow up question. Will students be, would students be on the site during those renovations? Or would they take place mostly during summer construction seasons? The principals underscored, yeah, guys in hazmat suits, and then there's a funny smell, and you have to have fire drills in a new way, and kids are getting relocated, like, like, construction is really disruptive from a student's perspective. Sort of that large-scale construction can be very disruptive.
So as a as a general rule, we aim to do all renovations and work during the summer and not to go into the school year. There are exceptions when we have, you know, supply delays, which is, which is occurring with some of our secure vestibule projects right now. But for the most part, we aim to finish before school starts.
How long do you think? This is probably a two summer.
Yes, this is definitely a two summer project.
My only comment, I know what I was going to say before, thought of it again. So if you, I mean, you guys do that beautiful Windler School, right? Windler Middle School? I was the principal when we designed that school. And when, I mean, just, just trying to put up, so it's not, it was seven years before we got that school. And it took seven years of being on the bond, being off the bond, being on the bond, being off the bond. And eventually our turn came. I mean, and so what we are experiencing now is not new. I mean, it's not new. It's just the way, it's just a, you know, the economy changed, the, our enrollment changed, there were so many changes that dictated when we got a school, right? But we eventually made the bond and we did get that school renovated. Not a new school, but we did get it renovated. And so I'm just saying, this is not new. It's just a part of, it's just part of the process and the reality of bonding. So I guess I'll go back to Member Donley and Member Holloman, if you have any closing comments and or a last question.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I guess you've all heard it before from me. When I was first elected to the board, there was a policy that we were not going to be building new schools, we were going to renovate and maximize utilization of our dollars to catch up on our backlog of deferred maintenance. And it was only repealed under the auspices that it was, we were told it was necessary to do the earthquake bonds. But all of a sudden, the six-year plan was proposed to add two new schools, which was Inlet View and Abbott Loop. And at the time, I didn't think that anyone would use that change in policy to allow for adding new schools, or I would have proposed to narrow the focus of that revision of the existing policy. Inlet View in particular is problematic because it was not measured as being overpopulation before the district amended how it calculated the population. And and then that was used to justify putting it on for an entire new school after that revision for the earthquake bonds. You might remember also that when the bonds were finally, the earthquake bonds were put forward, the board voted four to three, so it failed to break out Inlet View because it was such a, hadn't been proposed for a whole new school for quite a few years. And I personally don't think it would have passed as a standalone or even mixed in with other projects, regular maintenance projects, but because it was with the earthquake bonds, it was a, you know, a not accurate result of the community's support for tearing down an existing school and building an entire new school. I really think that we did a great job on turning in elementary. I think it's wonderful. We did a major remodel there that was very successful. And that school, I think, was actually older than Inlet View at the time it got that remodel. So remodels can be very successful. So remodels can be very successful. There have been members of the community all through this process said they preferred to do the remodel. And they were there at the time where the board did approve to put the tear down rebuild on the ballot by a three to four vote.
Thank you, Member Donley. And that vote, I, I do recall the vote passing. And, you know, I just want to thank the team for all your work. I want to make, you know, the kids are excited about this school. Their parents are excited. When, whatever the decision the board makes during its deliberations, keep the kids in the forefront. And that, that is what you've done and I really appreciate that. Dr. Bishop, you have a closing comment?
Well, I just want to thank the board. And again, I think this, this whole discussion is about, you know, a greater ability to, to pass a bond. And I wouldn't say that I could pass judgment on why 2020 people passed the bond and why they didn't, you know? I think there were several people very excited about the charter school being on there. There were many people excited about this and there were many people feeling like they needed to, to really support the earthquake. And so I don't have any evidence of, of how people thought, but as we move into new, a new bonding season, we certainly, we just weigh those risks about what is occurring in our community. You know, what, what do we believe is priority based off of needs? And, and again, the, the judgment of, like you said, you know, should it go, should it not? It's certainly not a judgment of the work of these folks or the need and the community and the support of the community. It's just, you know, everything that was have happened over the last few years has, has been more a matter of, of crazy circumstance in our world than necessarily. We're, we are still in a reactionary mode, so to speak, day to day because of the uncertainties. So I just appreciate the, the board's patience and, and discussions because that's going to get us to a better answer. Thank you.
All right. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, y'all want to stay?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?